Okay, good evening. Sorry about that, we have a little Wi-Fi problem going on here. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting for Monday, August 19th, 2019. And Matt?
You call and roll?
Yeah. So, uh... Start with Niko?
Here.
Jack?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Tessie?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Mike? And I'm here. Uh, and Tessie?
She's not here.
Janie?
I'm Janie.
Okay. And then, uh... So then the next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from July 15th. I think everybody had those in their inbox last couple of weeks ago. Any questions, comments, changes on the minutes? I think there was a couple corrections and resend out that some folks had, so they should be already in the minutes underlined. Any other comments, questions? Not a motion to be in order to approve the minutes from July?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Moved by Tessie, seconded by Mike. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
By host. Okay. The first item on the agenda for this meeting is a special use request by Richard Parker to operate a used car sales lot in the B2 General Retail Business District at 3707 North Vincent Avenue. So we'll have the petitioner come forward, answer questions from the board, give us a little overview of what you're trying to do, and then we'll have public comments, and then we will discuss. So if you could start out by stating your name and your address?
My name is Richard Parker, and this is my son, Richard Parker, Jr.
Can you speak into the microphone just so we can hear you better?
Yeah, speak into the mic so we can hear you.
My address is 817 West Nylund, Peoria, Illinois.
Okay. And so you are looking to operate a used car sales lot on that property? Any other information you want to give us about what you're trying to do there? Do you own another car lot? Do you... Is this just...
No, this is my first time dealing with used cars. I own a towing company on the south of... the south side of Peoria. And this is my first time dealing with used cars, so... And we're looking to do used cars off hours, what?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
Oh, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, 9 to 5, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there wouldn't be any delivery of cars after 5 or before 9?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? I have questions. Anybody else wants to go first? That's fine.
We had a similar site plan on this as well. And I understand that the state of Illinois has specific guidelines that you have to adhere to in terms of opening a used car dealership?
Yes.
And can you just speak into the mic, but just explain it so people understand kind of the requirements that you're under in terms of, I think, the hours and signage?
Well, in order to get the dealer license, we need the zoning permit.
Okay.
Special use permit. There's just a lot of paperwork, basically, and this is part of the puzzle.
It was my understanding, though, that they actually require... Just so people understood, they do background checks and they check out different... So just kind of their requirements that they have of you, because that might eliminate some questions people might have in terms of... Because I thought they had issues around signage, hours of operation, and I can't remember some of the other ones. You probably know them better.
Right.
No? Okay.
It's our first time.
Okay. I guess she'll get used to it.
How many cars are you anticipating having on the lot at any time?
Well, the guy before Gary, the owner of the lot, he said we can hold up to 30 cars.
No, I think it's 15.
Is it 15?
Yeah, 15, 20 cars, more like that.
15 to 20?
Yes.
And it went... So has it... It was operating a while back as a used car lot? And then how long is it? Do you... Maybe you don't know the answer to this, but for a while it just hasn't been operating, right? But previously it...
No, it hasn't been operating. I don't know how long it's been closed down.
Okay. But it was previously a used car?
It was a car lot, yes.
And are you doing all, as far as the entrance to the lot, as far as driving, is it all the same?
It'd be the same, exactly the same, no changes.
You're not changing anything in that?
That goes for the lighting as well?
The lighting as well, yes. No changes.
So what is there... Is there a sign plan? Because there isn't a sign today.
No, no sign yet. We have to get this first before we put the sign up.
Well, no, I know. But I mean, what's the plan for a sign? Are you... Do you plan to put a sign up?
Yes.
And where and what type of sign?
We will be putting it up on the building, not a very big... Putting it up on top of the building, in front of the building. But just a simple little Parker auto sale sign.
So on top of the building?
Yeah, in front of the building.
On the front of the building?
Yeah, on front of the building.
I think there's one there now. I thought there was one that they put up after the last one. So it'd basically be in the same spot where it is right now?
Exactly, yes, yeah.
So it's... There's one on the building?
I thought there was one that was put on after the last one, yes.
I literally was just standing in front of that building this afternoon, and I can't remember it.
As far as if there are people coming to look at cars, is there an opportunity for parking in that lot? Or do you anticipate they to be parking on the street?
They'll be parking in the lot.
There would still be space along with the cars that are for sale?
Yes.
So according to your site plan, the only place that you would park cars for sale is along the back fence line and along the roadway, that the rest of the parking lot would be open. So is that the plan, or...
Yes, that's the plan, yes, sir.
You have...
18.
Is there 18? I counted 17. I don't think I counted the big one as a car, but that's a car, too. So, yeah, so you show 17 cars here.
17.
On this plan, so I don't know... But it's not really to scale, so I don't really know if 17 will fit, or...
It's... Okay, so it's 130 across, right?
130 across.
Parking spots... Is it eight feet? Is that right?
Yeah, but that's a parking spot.
This you can pack them.
If you could pack them.
Right, so I'm just saying that would be 16 across the front.
130, full time.
Yeah, there's ample room.
Plenty of room, yeah.
It'll hold. I mean, it would hold 20, 22 pretty easy, I think.
We just did a quick calculation, just based on the size of a parking lot, just dividing the front. And you still have some setbacks and stuff, and it looks like it's... You could get 16 if you...
16?
As a parking lot. And you're probably going to park them tighter than that on the front. So...
So does, um... So what is the lighting today? Is the lot lit up? Or is it not lit up at night?
The lot... Just the front, the lighting is on the... and the street lights. There's some street lights, yeah.
Wasn't there originally some lighting on the garage?
I don't know.
He took it off.
Took it off.
Well, it's there. I think it's just disconnected.
Probably disconnected.
Lights are still there, but...
Yeah.
Because the cameras are all still there, too, and they're all disconnected?
Yeah, it's disconnected.
Oh, yeah.
So what's in that office space? Is there...
It's empty.
Office space, it has an area... It's the garage and it's the office room of...
Just garage and a bathroom. That's it.
So it does have a bathroom?
Yeah, that's it. Just garage and a bathroom. You have to put your own desk in there and make that.
So it's got a sink and a toilet and...
Yes, a sink and a toilet, yeah.
Any other questions of the gentlemen? Matt? Steve? Okay, so you guys can take a seat for a minute, and then we'll have... Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this particular... Okay. So you can have a seat. If you can step up to the microphone, again, say your name, address.
Hi, Martin Hedrick. I live at 3704 North Vincent, right across the street.
So are you on the corner, or...
Corner.
Okay.
If you look back at the minutes from the special use before, the sign thing up on the roof? No. I mean, it throws light right into our... right into our doorway, you know, and stuff like that at night, okay? The lighting was supposed to be kept to, you know, a minimum so it didn't disrupt our lives and stuff. I don't care about having a car lot over there, you know? It's just the lighting thing. The last guy... The last guy had a sign up on the roof, and that, you know... The way he had the lights pitched, it all shined over into our, you know, front yards and stuff like that, so...
So today, the way the light... lighting is, just today, without any cars there, is it...
There's no lighting.
There's no lighting?
Yeah. I mean, if they could, you know... If they can get it to where it shines, you know, towards the sign and not towards us, you know, that's all right, you know? It's just...
So are you in the house immediately behind...
Pardon?
Are you in the house immediately behind the lot on Vincent?
No, I'm across the street.
Oh, okay.
Pardon?
And I think our last hearing, they were actually concerned there wasn't enough light, some of the neighbors. Is that correct?
There was some concern at the la... Are you... So we had a meeting, I guess that would have been sometime late last year? No, I think it was last year.
Yeah.
And so at that meeting, there was more of a concern that it... Would it be lit well enough that, for safety reasons, I think, is what there were concerns?
I didn't notice.
That people... There was some concern that it was not going to have enough lighting, so they felt that the current lighting with just the streetlights, because I think that's what it is right now, the streetlights?
Yeah.
That are kind of around... I thought they were on the corner, too. But... So there was some concern that they wanted some additional lighting, so just for safety. That was one of the comments.
I don't remember that.
Okay.
So you would be okay with it, though, as long as the lighting was not, you know, not interfering with you?
Yeah, just as long as it wasn't obnoxious, you know?
Sure.
I'm fine with that, you know? And another thing, too, the 30-car thing? No. That lot won't support 30 cars.
Yeah, well, they had said... They said 30, then they changed to 15 to 20, and that's what we were kind of thinking. Is it probably more along the lines?
I think that's what it was the last time, you know? But the 30-car thing, no. And I've got to tell you right now, you know, access in and out of there is not real great. I mean, sorry, but that's one of the main downfalls of that place is, you know, it brings a lot of traffic into the neighborhood, you know? Other than that, you know, it's just a used car lot. I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that... From the public that wants to speak on this?
I just have a question. I'm Jay Gruber, 3814 North Monroe, Peoria Heights, Illinois, 61616. I just wanted to know, we're talking about the ownership of the business. The piece of land will still belong to the current owner, who is Mr. Kemp, is that right?
Correct, so...
You gentlemen will be paying rent to Mr. Kemp for his property, okay?
So I should have read the second page of the... Or I could have... Of the application, but it says, "To whom it may concern, I, Gary Kemp of GLK Land Trust, acknowledge illegal lease to be signed by Richard Parker, 812019, to occupy the property located at 3707 North Vincent. He has my permission to apply for special lease permit from the Peoria Heights Village to operate a used car dealership."
Thank you. I didn't know that. Thank you. I guess if it's possible... I'm not sure this is an appropriate question, but I'd like to invite this. I'm interested to know how many cars you hope to sell at least and at most potentially, and how you would expect to be profitable in that space. So it comes from wanting a lovely viable business, which I am hopeful that you gentlemen will have. But I would like to know, do you think you're going to have four cars a week? 40 cars a week? I don't know. So I'd be interested in that kind of information. Is that appropriate to ask?
Sure.
Because viability matters for all business owners.
Right.
Thank you so much.
So I'll let you answer that in a minute and make sure there's nobody else that... Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
I can wait.
Okay. So do you know what your plan... What your business plan as far as how many cars you have to sell a week? Or what your thoughts are on how many you will sell a week?
The whole is to... About, in fact, to sell about 15, 20, 50. Probably range of 2,500 to 5,000.
So 15 cars a week? Okay. Sir? Did you want to...
My name is Dan Callahan, and I... My business is at 1015 East War Memorial in the Heights. And my question is, what is the length of the lease, gentlemen? Do you... Have you decided? Two-year lease? And does this decision by... Or the proposal by this board? How long... Would that just rest with these individual owners, tenants of the lease?
Yes.
So then the next time, if it changes hands, at the end of two years?
Same reason we visited this last December or November, now we're visiting again.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. And then the other thing is just in general, what is it that would not be permitted in this? I should have done my research on this, but as far as, you know, on this prominent spot along there, I mean, is there any type of business that would not be allowed?
I can tell you, under the zoning, used car lots are only permitted anywhere in the village with a special use. So this is just, you know, business-owned property that because it's... The particular business is a used car lot...
You have to go through the process.
That would be true anywhere, even like down on Galena, anywhere in the village.
Okay. Thank you.
But as far as businesses, if you look at the code, there's a list of businesses... Types of businesses that are listed in each district.
Thank you.
Dan and the other gentleman, just... I just looked back at the minutes from the last meeting that we had, and they had asked for a 40-car at that time, and we restricted it to a maximum of 25. And then it sounds like there was an issue with some lighting, but there was a light that was out, that was actually a street light that was out. So not their responsibility, but was something they were going to follow up on. And I'm just trying to think of the other issues. I don't think there wasn't anybody here from the audience that spoke at that one. But again, these come up every time... Dan, to your point, every time there's a change in ownership, and someone... If someone wants to open something else, a car dealership there, we would revisit this. And then I believe there's an annual inspection, isn't there?
There is.
Yeah.
It has to get renewed every year, once it's approved. It wouldn't come back to the ZVA, but the board does...
No, through the village.
Yeah, yeah.
So as long as it's the same ownership? It just gets a inspection every year?
Usually somebody will go by and inspect, and, you know, then Chief Sutton will report back to the board and make a recommendation on where or another, and the board votes to renew it or not renew. And we have in the past had issues where we did it more often than once a year. We did it every quarter, so...
And Mark, I've been at some of these meetings, you know, Chief will say that something... Somebody's not in compliance.
Right.
And what are they not in compliance with?
Oh, you know, hours of operation, dropping cars off after hours. That was the big concern with this one.
So there's a watchful eye from the village?
They watch it, yeah.
Okay.
Just one other question. So you said you'd do a towing... You currently have a towing business, so there's no towing that's going to be done out of this, and there's no... That was one of the concerns last time, was there would be like auto repair, and there were concerns by neighbors that they...
So you won't tow from anywhere to this lot, per se, other than during the hours of operation? And Mr. Parker, because you own this towing business, I'm assuming you have locations to hold cars that may not fit on this lot that you can circle through? So, you know, 15, 20, 25 cars? You can have it at your other location, I guess, where your tow business is located, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions of... Anybody else from the audience, first of all? Okay. So public comments are closed. So anything else that you want to inform us of? Or is there any other questions for Mr. Parker?
I just wanted to ask, so would you be willing, if... In terms of the lighting issue that the neighbor brought up, to ensure, like, we wrote that into the special use permit, to ensure that, you know, you made sure that there was no lighting that would be, you know, an annoyance to the neighbors in terms of any sign lighting or anything like that?
So do you really even expect to put a light on the sign, or are you just going to have a sign up that people can see during the day?
You don't necessarily need a light out. Sign. It's just going to... Face from one up.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So any other discussion by the board? I think as we talk about making a motion or look at it, we should probably put a limit on the number of cars and, you know, the lighting... Like a lighted sign, there's... The sign ordinance basically says, you know, you can't have a sign that's lit... That points, you know, that points into a neighborhood. So I think that that would take care of that, but I would... Maybe we say just general lighting is not obtrusive to the neighborhood. So I don't know. If anybody wants to make a motion? Oh, sorry. Getting ahead of myself. We have the findings of fact. So I think everybody has a copy of the special use findings of facts. So the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use or site plan will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comforts, or general welfare. Everybody agree with that? Any who knows? Special use or site plan will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminishes and impair property values within the neighborhood which is to be located. Anybody agree? Anybody has a no on that? The establishment of the special use or site plan will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for use permitted in the district. Agree with that? Any who knows? Adequate facilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities have been and will be provided? Good with that? Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress that is so designed to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets? Good? Public use or providing a public utility service, which is an NA? And then the special use or site plan in all other respects conformed to the applicable regulations of the districts which is located, except such regulations may be, each instance, modified pursuant to the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals. Everybody good with that? Okay. So then a motion to either approve or... Well, why don't we say a motion to approve? Does anybody have a motion and the special conditions?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve with a maximum of 25 cars, based on the last form or approval. The signage would be per the village signing ordinance, and any lighting on the sign or other would not be obtrusive to any of the neighbors.
Okay. You second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy, seconded by Mike, with the conditions of max 25 cars, signage according to ordinance, and without... With no obtrusive lighting for the neighborhood. Got that? Did I get that right? Correct. Okay. So... Any other discussion? Matt, you call and roll? Yes. And the obtrusiveness of the lighting for the neighbors, is that just monotonous with the signage regulation? I mean, is there a regulation that you can't have obtrusive lighting?
Yeah, you can't have lights from your property that are, you know, interfere with use and joint of the neighborhood.
Okay. But that's fine. Okay. Niko?
Yes, aye.
Jack?
Yes.
Kathy?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Tessie?
Aye.
I vote aye. Steve?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay.
Eight ayes, no nays.
No extensions. Okay. So site plan was approved. You can go to the village and... Or actually, this will be going to the zoning board.
It'll be on an upcoming board agenda, not tomorrow, but probably sometime next month.
So this is a recommendation to the village board. The village board has to vote on it also, and then after that, you can get your special use permit. Yeah. Once the village board passes it, if you talk to Sarah, who's the administrative assistant up here, then... Okay, thank you. What's the date today? I should know that.
Thank you.
You, too. Okay. Don't let me forget to send this to... I took the last ones home, put them in a box.
Oh.
Sarah calls like three days on a day. Whatever happened? Okay. Next, we have a site plan review and variance application by PH Samuel LLC.
Next, we have a site plan review and variance application by PH Samuel LLC, seeking approval on the site plan, proposed residential building, and variance from building height limitations, variance from minimum lot size requirements, variance from front yard depth setback requirement, and a variance from lot coverage limit, and the front yard fence variance for a portion of the property located at 1324 East Samuel Avenue. Petitioner here? Just to be clear on the, unless you're going to go through this, Katie?
Oops.
So, looks like, I think everybody got the packet right that has the blue lines on it that talks about what the variances are that PH Samuel's requesting. Basically, there's the inch and seven-eighths on the height.
Isn't it?
No, inch and seven-eighths on the height, and then 6.25 on the, on the height under the new code. So only one of those actually apply. It's the second one.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
But I mean, even if, yeah, okay, it's the second one, I think, that applies. Then you have home variance request for 37,000, 3750 square foot lot. So under the current R3, it's, R3, but it's R2, right? So it's 6,000 square feet. they are covering 44.7% of the lot, which is 4%, over the coverage. And then the variance request for the front yard fence, which they're looking for, they got a picture of it, I'm sure they'll show you. Okay.
So there's no front yard setback? That's, because it says it in, but it doesn't.
Yeah, we, I've determined they don't need a setback based on the site plan.
Okay. What was that again, Mark? I didn't, what was that that you said?
None of the setbacks require any variance based on the site plan.
Right, because she started, I think, last time, Katie, you were talking about 20 feet, right?
Yeah.
But it's, but it was with the porch or whatever, so.
Exactly.
Which is really 25, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, I was looking at the, I was looking at the.
One down, one down. So, no, I appreciate the feedback from the last.
We're clearing it all up for you before you even talk, so.
I was over there. I think the pointer good now.
I was looking at the old one, and I was getting very confused, and then I realized I was looking at the old one.
Oh, no, and I appreciate the feedback from the discussion last time, because that, like Mark said, went off the table.
Okay, so if you want to take us through it again?
Yeah.
I think everybody pretty much knows, but take us through it again, and then we'll go through the process.
Okay, perfect. And I think everybody was here pretty much last time, right, of the same, so similar, similar slides, just updated in with the information that we've had between now and then. So unless you want me to recap the project in itself, I was just going to go jump into the application, if that's good.
Sounds fun.
Yeah. Okay. So this is the development location area, and then the red box is, is the lot that we're talking about, the parcel here. This is just the rendering that we showed of the condo building that got approved last time, and hoping to start construction here very soon. And the design concept for the townhomes that we presented way back to the council, as well as to you guys on prior, one of the things that we've talked about with the home restrictions that are actually deed restrictions with the lots, is that it has to be a two-story minimum construction, garden level basement, 100% of the facade improvements have to be a mix of the following materials, the brick, the stone, or some kind of, the EPIS, drive it. The driveways would be in the alley access, so there'd be no front yard driveways, front porch and the wrought iron fences required in the front of the home. And then review and approval of the builder plans and facade by the Kim group. And these are all deed restrictions with the lots. So development concept, again, another perspective of the sites that we're looking. This red area is the development infrastructure plan area that we have in the signed redevelopment agreement, which includes reconstruction of Samuel Avenue and the alleys shown in red, and includes reconstruction of the water sanitary stormlines. And we have started some of those discussions with Amarin, as well as with the village engineer and, and some of the utilities, and Mike Casey, as well with the village. We've, and then also includes, sidewalks on both sides, north and the south. Overhead utilities taken down, and then fiber for high-speed internet throughout these, these red areas.
Go back, I'm sorry. Go back to that real quick. So you said you started discussions with the village, but do you know, if you do, when the infrastructure part starts, is it all in whole, or do they do the first block and then the second block? Do you know, have you had those discussions?
We're not, we're not there yet, just in the discussions, we're not there. I know that the village engineer's gotten some points in their topography, and then things mapped out, but we're not, we're just, we haven't been in those discussions with them. We've talked with Alicia at a very, very high level about doing it in phases, doing it the first block, and then doing the second block, but having that master plan all at one time, so it limits the amount of construction. However, I mean, prospect went really quick. I know we're doing a lot more work than what was done there, but.
Okay.
Katie, can you, I thought in the redevelopment agreement, there was something specific, like targets as to a milestone either that you achieved, that would trigger the infrastructure? Can you go through that? I know you guys.
Yeah, so the building permit application for the condo building triggered the kickstarting of the village engineering of the, of the infrastructure work. And so that got submitted, I want to say in May. And then Herman and Associates, I'm not sure when they got voted on to start the work, but it was maybe a month or two afterwards, somewhere around there?
I gotta say, it was June.
June, okay. Sorry, Kathy, I don't know that exact, I wasn't at that meeting. But, but they went out and they've started doing topo and elevation sites, and getting the utilities laid out. And then when we met with Amarin, I'm going to say about two, two and a half weeks ago, we invited Alicia, the village engineer, to come to the meeting as well, to be part of those discussions, so we all make sure we're in line and in sync. And then we have a couple more meetings this week. So, and that's more so on the utilities, because what we're looking at is really the risk factor of building, why the lines are up in there.
Okay.
Oh, and then the other, and the terms of kicking off is, kicking off is as soon as we can verify the, the amount that the building will be taxed at. So this is the proposed St. Jude Dream Home at 1322 East Samuel. And so the layout, the facade, and Scott Lewis is here today as well, sitting in the audience over there. And, and him and his team have been designing this, and we may have a couple changes to the front in terms of the overhang, but otherwise, the structure and the floor plan, exactly the same on there. So, you guys, I believe, received all the floor plan prints as well there. So kind of flipping through here, this shows a little bit of the site, and then just going one by one with what the code variances we're requesting. With the building height, we're requesting with code 10-7B3, a variance of 1 and 7/8 inch, as were shown on the drawing here. And then a code that was amended in June of this year to have the house, in regards to the adjacent house and the size, we were actually able, the best we had our engineer to be able to go out and size a house, because the problem with that is we can't go onto somebody else's property and literally take the tight measure to size it. And, and we'd reached out and hadn't received a, a recall back, and then we, again, didn't want to go on the side, so we had our engineer stand in the street and do a visual scale of what we knew on the current house. So with that, we have a variance request of 6.25 feet of that, from the additional code that got amended in June.
So just, just to be clear on that, we were just talking, kind of discussing that. So it's, it's this calculation that you need the variance on, the one before, the 1.7, 1 and 7/8, really doesn't, really doesn't.
My opinion, that would not require variance.
Right, it's the second one, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, usually that can be administratively approved, but I didn't find anything in the code that could, so we just put it, put both of them on there.
Well, I don't think, this one, because the code changed, this one really doesn't apply anymore. So it's the second one.
Okay.
So you just need the one variance for the 6.25 feet, is what we're saying.
Okay. All right. And then lot size, again, as previously discussed, we're going back to the original plat, and there are a majority of the homes on that street that are still at the 30 by 125 lot size, as well as some of the adjacent blocks as well. So going back to that size of the 30 by 125, and that would be a variance of 2,250 square feet. And then this is just the original lot sizes in the plats that were part of, of that original one. And then the line setbacks, and we talked about the setbacks last, about doing the line marker on that. And from the front yard, side yard, and rear yard, what has changed from last time is in not having to calculate the front porch, that we would not need a variance on the front yard, whereas before we did, when we previously went for discussion. Existing setbacks of the yards, I just kept this slide in there for reference. The lot coverage, we have currently a lot coverage of 44.7, so we're asking for a variance of 175, or 73 square feet, sorry, or 4.7% of the lot. And then the habitable area, we don't need a variance on that one per code. And then the fencing restrictions, which according to code, any fence that you need needs to have a variance, and so in line with what we were originally proposing to put it on the lot line, is where we're looking at here, putting it here. And so I highlighted the, the blue to show the front yard, where it would come across, and then down to the side, and where it would come back into the side, just where the house starts. So I highlight that area, and that's, that's it. Sorry, I went through that a little bit faster than last time, but.
No, I think it's time for me. So any questions, Katie?
I have a question regarding the height and the new ordinance that we had, we had voted on. Is there a reason why you didn't take into consideration the height restrictions in the design of the building?
Actually, we didn't realize that that additional ordinance had been passed, because at a previous council meeting that I was at, that it was discussed, we were told we were going to be grandfathered in at that council meeting, and so it was our misunderstanding from that conversation. And again, at that point in time, it was deferred, so we just were not made aware that that ordinance came in until we sat down.
Is it possible for you to consider that in sort of terms of different options, that you can achieve the same square footage without going past that height? Because I guess that's kind of an, was a fairly important ordinance that we passed, just to make sure that we're not having, you know, three-story buildings that are next to single, you know, single-story buildings, or story and a half buildings, because this is an infill project, it's not just all happening at once. So if you can, I mean, are you able to consider any other options in terms of that?
The hard part, as we, when we originally designed it, prior to the ordinance being passed, and having all of it together, having the three-story option, if we, because of the slope and the topography, and wanting the driveways to come in, and having that elevation up there, and then having to get three stories with a peaked roof, I mean, we can make the roof a little bit less peaked, I don't know if we can take six feet off of that, and, and that size, but it was, it was in line with what we had originally proposed. And again, I wasn't aware that the restrictions were moving forward, that we weren't being grandfathered in, because we would have, we would have shown some of our examples to show that even a little bit more feet would be great. And again, we're, like you said, an infill project, so once it's infilled, a lot of them would look the same, and similar, wouldn't look different.
But I mean, as far as some of the drawings that were presented before, those were more like, the third story was actually like a dormered third story, not just a complete, you know, full third story with the height that it is now. So it is, it is different than at least what the proposals that I had seen originally.
So a lot of them had a full height first, the third floor in them, in the plans that we have, so like on our website, we have the probably about 12.
Well, I drew that one in, but on these ones, most of them show like a dormered third floor.
So that, those are actually full height third floor, they're just setback different, and we did the, the kind of a mansored type of a roof, but it has a flat roof on it, so it would have a full height third floor.
I think the topography that you brought up is actually, I think, one of the reasons that that becomes a concern, because if you sit or stand right now at the current lot that you're referring to, and this was something when you came last October, I think, and we talked about it, it was a concern. I mean, if you're standing at that height, I mean, to get to the corner where the next house would be, that could be a full three stories, I mean, you're, it almost would be like a four stories, it's almost, you know, when I'm standing there, it's almost like my eye level where that is. So if you have, you know, when you look at this design, that is very kind of horizontal and very flat, which I know you were trying to mimic kind of Chicago neighborhood design, which again, Chicago's very flat, when you have something where it's, you know, this one's here, and then this one's up here, and you've got very vertical designs, I think that's where that height gets almost a little bit more magnified. And I think that was a concern before, as, as well as now, and I think that was the sense of urgency around needing a height requirement, if you will, to make it so that we could have infill development, but also make it be infilled, so that it didn't look like it was just kind of dropped in.
So I have a question. So going back to the original, you know, lot size, and we're talking about infill lots, is the idea to take that narrow lot and then fill it in with another plan that will require another variance down the road?
Yes. So what we originally were wanting to do is kind of do a blanket, like do a, basically a district or zone for the whole entire street, and then it was basically requested that they didn't do it that way, and then we come house by house by house. So every house we do on the block will have to come in front of you.
But as far as the variance for height, now the one.
I'm just talking about the light, lot size.
Yeah, lot size, yeah.
So the lot size would have to come, if there's, like, here we didn't have any front yard, if they have a percentage of the lot coverage, I mean, everything that we're asking for could potentially come back with each and every house on that street.
And then, yeah, then you could have, when you have a, if you're building a house right next to it, assume it's going to be in code by then, since we're.
Yeah, like, we're about ready to per, per submit on the house next to it, on the other lot, and we're probably, I'm going to say about a month away on that, and that would be, height-wise, it'd be right in line with it, we wouldn't have to ask for variance on the height.
Katie, could you go back to the, where you had all the, the slide that you had, all the different lots, I guess it was? Because I, there seems to be a misunderstanding, I know with Janie's not here, but she was of the opinion that you were, you were purchasing all the lots and they would all be developed, which is not, I mean, you've, it's kind of a.
We've never said we were going to, we ideally would intend to purchase all the lots.
No, I understand that, she just, she was looking at the plan, and so her understanding of the plan.
Oh.
Was that everything would be developed like this. And so I just want to make sure that anybody else understands that it's not, it's truly an infill plan, so it could be, you might have one, then you can have a house that's there, you might have two houses that are there, and then another one. And I think the average lot size right now, we talked about last month, is around 48 feet right now, is on that block, I think, is what it is.
Yeah, so on the, on the, the block, there's about 42% of the lots are the 30 by 125, and about 62% of the lots on there currently would not qualify with the current zoning standard, as in where they're at right now. And a lot of those lots have come and combined to two lots, or a lot and a half. And a lot of those lots have come and combined to two lots, or a lot and a half over time.
So in the first lot, or the first block I have, that there's 1, 2, 3, 2, 3 that are 30 feet, 1's 39, and then they're going to go 75, 60, something like that, so 45. So just to get an understanding of where those other lots are, and their lot coverage, I guess, for people to understand.
Yeah, so like on the north side, we had sold some of the lots to, to a developer that we were teaming with, Noah Herman, and developer, design builder, sorry. So they currently own 13 through 1331. And again, those are deed restrictions with the same qualifications that we just showed. So all of those would be at a 30 by 125 lot, so that would be five lots. So all those houses would look exactly the same right there in that chunk. And then, then you might skip a house, and then we might have another chunk of two or three houses. And that kind of goes along the same way, up and down that street, on the north and south side.
You had said something, I thought, on the deed restrictions you've had, I thought basement was included in that.
So the garden, like a garden-level basement, so we were basically saying it had to be raised up, so similar to how the houses are now, so you have the front step port, steps in the porch.
Right.
But they wouldn't need a full basement, they could do like a crawl space, as long as it came up to that garden level.
Oh, okay, so I guess I'm...
Not like a full-depth basement.
You're not requiring a basement, you're just requiring it to be elevated?
Mm-hmm.
And then what is the goal for the third, like, three stories? Like, why are, why is, is that just a stylistic choice, or why, why do we need, you know, this building particularly to be at three stories?
Really trying to get all the rooms and function that people are wanting in the house, in the lot area, in the lot size, and not go too much over on the lot percentage, still give a little bit of space for it, is just how it kind of works out, square-foot wise.
So was there any consideration as far as capturing some of the square footage over the garage, because the garage is single-story, or as a basement? I mean, if you're already requiring it to be elevated, to have that crawl space, or to have the elevated look, I mean, as opposed to going tall, is there a reason why there wasn't some discussion, or I don't, maybe there was, but why there isn't a design that could be, capture that square footage either in the basement or over the garage?
Cost. Just really looking at the cost for the house to do a full basement versus, versus that crawl space we spent.
And the garage, over the garage?
That was really the designer's choice on that one.
So more of just a design decision?
I thought in the original discussion that you said that they would have a garden basement, so isn't a garden basement a full basement? Isn't that?
A garden, like a garden-level basement where it'd have to be like raised, so you see like the lights actually coming in, as opposed to like a sunken basement, where like there's no lights, and basically the height, yeah. Our intent was to get the...
But if you have a garden, it's a full height once you're inside, correct? I mean, if I think of a garden apartment, I would go in, I'd go down, and, you know, I'd have windows that would show, but...
I mean, that's, I lived in a garden apartment, it was a full-height basement, but then windows...
It's like an English basement.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I lived in a garden apartment in Chicago as well, and so what we had, we had approved is that they could have it, as long as the intent was to keep on the outside, so it keeps the, that facade look.
So I guess what I, I'm just trying to figure out, you were saying that you went away from the full basement because of the cost, but if you're doing the garden basement, that is a full basement?
It's not a full basement, it's a, it's a garden crawl basement.
Oh, so it's not, it's a crawl...
It's a crawl space, in essence, I mean, yeah.
That has windows for a status.
Are there windows? It doesn't show windows on the plan, are there windows?
Some of them do here.
I don't know if that has windows on that plan, but it would be the height mostly, mostly the height was for the front steps in the porch. But the intent was, if you did have a basement down there, you would be able to have good height windows, so that the lights in, or sunlight, I should say.
I have a question, and as far as the fence goes, what, I mean, because one of the things that we're supposed to be considering for these are hardships. I mean, is there a hardship in terms of the fence, that you need to have that fence there?
So with the fence restriction, with the code, we have to come and ask for variance for every, any single fence that we put on there, and we want to put, we want to have that row in the line, and that's what we proposed in our plan, and approved with what we have in the condo building for the wrought iron fence, we want to continue that look. Now, I know not every house will, will have it, again, with an infill project. The lot adjacent to us on the east side has a chain link fence up. I mean, it's, I would think our fence would look a lot prettier than that. And then on the other side at the corner, they have a white picket fence, but really that was what we proposed, that's what we, we said we were going to do, so keeping in line with what we got previously approved.
Right, yeah, and honestly, I don't have an issue with the aesthetic of the front yard fence, it's, the problem is, we're by code supposed to be considering a hardship for it, and that's the stick on.
Yep, and I, I guess when I read the code, it was any type of fence, variance needs to come through, so... And just on that fence too, how our look is, and as well the book, you'll see that there's two masonry pillars, which we put that in there detail as well, they're only on the walkways to the sidewalk, so at the property line, it would just be a clean fence break going back, so it's not like you'd have all these masonry pillars everywhere else. We wanted to make it look nice and clean.
Is there a gate, or is it open?
It's open. That doesn't mean that somebody couldn't put a gate in the future, but, you know, if they wanted to have a little dog area or something like that out there, but...
So you're saying that if they needed to have a dog, they could put in a gate to make sure the dog didn't get out?
But I would assume that they would probably have to come back and get a variance for the gate door, because they'd be modifying the fence, but I'm not sure how that would go.
Probably not.
Okay.
Once, once you, once you have a fence variance, I think you're good.
Okay, so, yeah. We wanted to have it where it have a nice place, because you're going to have cars parking there, and the drive going back and forth with a lot of the traffic from like leaves and beans, and some of the, that commercial space that comes down and parks on that street, just to have a little bit of protection.
Again, I can go back to the topography, if it was just a straight piece of land, unfortunately it's not, of all the places, because we do have a lot of straight, but it does exaggerate just anything that you're doing, whether it's a fence, whether it's the, so I do have some concerns with that, besides the fact that you are supposed to demonstrate a hardship regardless of any fence that comes before us. And, and not a convenience, so as I said last, you know, I don't want to be a dead horse, because I talked about it last month, it's, there's really not a hardship issue, and it, it doesn't seem like it prevents moving forward with the development itself, I guess, for the building, of the building.
Yeah, it's, I mean, for us, it's a pretty key piece to the look and feel of the development, and I think, I mean, I don't know if there's, there's not a hardship at looking at a chain link fence, but I think it would be an enhancement from what is adjacent.
And I think that's the reason we have it in there, was to try to kind of control things. The other thing I just want to address, because there were so many concerns when you first presented this back in October, around drainage, and I know it came up again with the condo development, and I know the infrastructure's going to get at some of that, but the fact that we're really maxing out the lot coverage, so I've got a contact issue going on here, maxing it out, is there, I mean, is it just all going to be addressed then, I guess at the time when the infrastructure goes through, or what are the interim measures? If this is one unit that's taking place right now, and maybe you could share with us what the plans are? You talked about laying concrete somewhere next door, I don't know if that's for another building, but is there, I guess what are the next plans, so we can kind of see how the development's going to unfold?
So in the condo building, we, because of the, the size that we were taking up, we have underground storage water tanks in two areas on that complex. In terms of this, the residential, I mean, it would be the typical, you know, system as we design it out with a village engineer, that would be handling the runoff. There are, you know, a couple houses on here that are a lot further over the percentage of, especially the one that just got added on to, or redone, I'm not sure how it was done, on Columbus. I mean, they're almost at, I would probably say 90 to 92% of the lot size for that drainage, but, I mean, looking at the storm system, making sure it's size right, making sure it's size right for the type of development we're doing, is definitely all that's coming into that engineering studies and calculations as well.
Okay. So last October, you talked about your initial plan was to develop, I think it's 1315, maybe, the lot right next to the hairdresser, the hair salon was going to be the spec home, and then I think you were talking about you'd have your personal residence the next lot. Just, I'm just trying to get a sense for how it's all going to fill in, is there any sense in terms of timing, or when those would be started, and, and how this would all fit as we're trying to look at the fit of this within the neighborhood?
Like I said, the house adjacent to this one, we're looking to submit that in the next month. We've kind of put our plans on the back burner with the zoning for the condo building, and a couple of our other projects that have ticked off have kind of just put, kind of the shoemaker shoe story, if you will, like put our house on the back burner to work on everybody else's, so that's where I can't tell you.
No, I mean, I don't mean yours personally, I just mean the, kind of the thought was, it seemed like you were coming down the street with a condo on one side, and...
Yeah, I'd have to go back and check our agreement on the sale, but I know there's like, I think, two-year timeframe to get those constructed, because originally, and with all the other ones, we have a year, the ones they purchased a lot to construct. However, since they were also constructing the condo building, we wanted to make sure we focused on getting that done, so we gave them a two-year timeframe on that.
Okay. And when you say the lot adjacent to it, the lot just to, what would that be, to the east of it is going to be?
East, yes.
Okay, so the one immediately to the east?
The one immediately to the e, east, yeah, sorry, I have to stand on the street. Yep.
I got to add too, sorry, what was the big issue with the fence, though? Why, in, is, in regard to a hardship, you said?
Anytime that you have a fence, you're supposed to have a proven hardship, so anytime you come before the board with a variance request, you're supposed to, one of the requirements is that you demonstrate that there's a hardship, and it's not, it's not just a convenience to the owner?
Even if it's on the property line?
Yes.
Just like, I mean, because we had this, not the last time, but the one before, where, I don't know his exact name, but it got...
Mr. Danarsky, yes, yes.
It's kind of the same issue I'm seeing here, and I don't see...
So it's, it would be any, and Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the requirements of any zoning variance, that when you come before the zoning board, there should be a demonstratable hardship to have a variance.
To build a fence on your own property, there needs to be a hardship?
Not just a fence, not just for any, so for the height variance, for anything, there's normally some kind of demonstratable hardship.
I don't agree with that, but...
That's, that's just the way the zoning ordinance is.
I just wanted it to be explained, because I didn't, I don't really...
If I could. That hardship element, I would caution, in a very serious way, elevating that element beyond what it's intended, because I can tell you that if you, if you apply that element strictly, there is never any variance that would ever, ever pass muster. And the reason for that, especially with a fence, the only, I can't conceive of any factual circumstance where a front yard fence would be required by some hardship for the property in the absence of just repeated criminal entry to the house. I mean, and that, that's just, you know, I know from crime statistics, we don't have that anywhere in the height, so if you elevate that hardship element, you might as well take away the front yard fence, and just say, no front yard fences are allowed anywhere ever. But that's true with all variances, and as an attorney who drafts these ordinances, you've got to understand, part of the variance procedure is, the goal is to get certain requests, certain, you know, whether it's setbacks, lot, you know, coverage ratios, things like that, certain things that you judge are appropriate in some circumstances, but not appropriate in others, to get those types of things in front of this board, so you can really dig in on that particular site plan. It's not really intended to, you know, force the developer to prove that without this, I can't build this house, or I can't make any use of the property. Now, I realize there is that legal standard there, and it is in our ordinance, but I just, I want to caution against elevating that beyond what it was really intended.
I guess, and I totally understand that, and we obviously pass a lot of variances here, but again, with this, I just feel we should hold people to the same standard across the board, and I guess that's...
Well, that I completely agree with, everybody should be held to the same standard.
But that said, when, going back to the fence ordinance change itself, when we talked about front yard fences back, we've done it twice now, the original kind of intent was, we started having people building six-foot privacy fences in the front yard, right? Which just, you know, didn't, wasn't conducive to any part of any neighborhood, right? And then people were putting in really crappy-looking fences that, you know, they didn't spend any money on, and they were falling down within a year, and nobody would take care of them, and so it was kind of that, how do we make sure that the person putting the fence in is not putting a six-foot privacy fence, and they're not putting some really, really, really cheap chain link fence, or, you know, a wooden slat fence, and et cetera, so that's why the open design, and all those things, right? And the material, was to try and keep the front yards looking nice.
And I don't think that Katie Kim's in the business of making a subplot fence in the, you know, in her property, so I just think it's very important that we keep property rights.
I think it would be, I think it would be, from my view, if it was uniform down that whole street, down both sides, that would be fine, but if you're saying, some people won't have to have the same fence because they purchased this property, that's where I have a problem with it. Because then you're going to have, what you have drawn up here is a nice-looking fence, but who's to say the neighbor's going to put in a fence that looks like that fence? You know, the topography's weird enough, then to have a really nice fence break up with no fence, to break up with some other designed fence, that's, that's my issue with the fence. I mean, that's where I stand on it, so...
Yep, and we, we had a lot of discussion as, do we, do we wait and put the fences in all at one time, do we do like a neighborhood association, you know, I mean, there's, we've gone back and forth about it numerous times, and numerous discussion, and, and really we can control what we have control over, and we really want it to look nice. It doesn't mean that those owners of those properties don't say, hey, this does really look nice, it does improve my, my property and my appearance, I would want to do the same thing. I mean, that's our hope, if we don't, if we don't purchase that house, and it gets, you know, and it gets developed on both sides, and they could come and say, hey, all we have to do is really connect, you know, and then it looks nice and finished, it looks like a well-developed neighborhood, so. I mean, we wouldn't restrict anybody from, of adding it if we, if it wasn't on our property, for sure, so. It just gets really hard when you look at escrowing funds to do that later.
Okay, any other questions of Katie?
Do you want me to read Janie's letter that you...
Well, yeah, we'll do that in public comments. Okay, so we will move on to public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak? One at a time, come up, state your name, address. And please try to limit it to five minutes.
My name's Don Gorman, I own the property at 1320 East Samuel. I just have one question for a little clarification in the opening presentation, the address was mentioned as 1322 East Samuel, and on tonight's agenda, I'm looking at for the property located at 1324. So...
There is an address discrepancy, but it is the same property.
Correct, okay, I just wanted to make sure that...
Right, there's a discrepancy between what the tax assessor calls the address and what the building originally, as those lots were planted, but it is the same property, it's that one, but again, it's been split, so you've got to understand that that address... So you've got to understand that that address applies to that 30-foot wide parcel.
Okay, thank you. Next question I have is regarding the off-street, there'll be no parking on the street, all be in the alley? And is it the intent that the alley be widened to 20-foot to accommodate the alley parking?
I'm not aware of any plan to.
Well, I mean, other than it's on the infrastructure plan to do those alleys.
Right, right.
I don't know what they're going to do to them. I don't know how wide they're going to maybe widen them, or just repave them, or, I'm, I'm not sure that there is a plan yet. As Katie said, she, the, the infrastructure hasn't been decided yet, so.
But I don't think, I think the intent is to have the, the access to the garages from the back, and Katie, correct me if I'm wrong. And then obviously, you could park behind your garage or whatever, but you would still have, I mean, the streets are public streets, so you could still have people.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was my intent to get that question, for the, for the use of the alley and that. Then my last concern, and I spoke at the other hearings in that, is the water runoff. Being in that area there, that's a low area, even though 40, 44.7% of the property is going to be covered, does that take in consideration the driveways in the back there and garages? And that, will that not cut down on?
The structures, so, but that's what our ordinance covers. But I, I know that part of the infrastructure plan is to deal with the stormwater runoff. So, I mean, that, that will be dealt with by the engineers.
And, and you've been, like you said, cooperating with Alicia Herman, our village engineer, on all of those designs. So if anything, I, it would be my hope that after construction, this would improve.
And that's my, my hope, too, because I could say right now, from the properties that have been demolished, with the heaviest storms that we had earlier this summer, and that, the water saturated into the vacant ground. Not near the problem with the sewers to keep up. And when the water came up prior, it got within two and a half foot of going into my garage. And that's my concern. And I've seen the cars that had parked there, that had to open their doors to let the water run out. And.
I was just going to say, so check me if I'm wrong, though, Mark, the infrastructure changes. So the red areas that were indicated on that drawing that said, here's the infrastructure changes, it'll be on the street, the alleys, but the infrastructure plan is really the village's.
Yeah, that's our.
That's our, our plan, our, our thing, which would mean, it's up to the village to make sure it takes care of any stormwater.
You know, in the public right-of-way, that's, that's true. Each lot, as it's developed, is going to have to connect properly to that.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I mean, I mean, just as far as, as more catch basins, bigger pipes for catch basins, et cetera, will be the village's responsibility.
Okay. Well, that's, that's all I had, that it's just my concern. I want to protect my property there from the water runoff and more ground covered. Where's that water going to go?
Bob Swanson, 1332 and 1334 East Samuel, the neighbor to the east. My concern is the height of the buildings. I know Mr. Gorman on the other side is, house is a ranch. We live in a, in a one-story house. There's a one-story house next to us, and then a two-story house on the end. These are on 30 lots. Our two houses are on 135 feet. I think Don is on 60 feet, and where the, the dream home is being built, it's, it was formerly 90 feet. There's certainly going to be a big change in the population density there, which is fine. But the, the three-story that's right next to me is something that I'm not very comfortable with. And I think something that could be addressed.
Kent Watercutty, 1210 Kingman. Right next to us is a two-story house. And the lots are small. We've got a one-story house, built in 2016. If anybody wants to go by there and look at that house, and say that they should be building two and three-story houses next to a one-story house, I don't think it should go. If you're buying the whole section, I don't have a problem with the development, but you can't just go into a neighborhood and put one or two houses in there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sandy Glens, and I also live at 1210 Kingman. And I can tell you that lot coverage violations, height violations, setback violations cause a lot of water problems. And I am currently dealing with water in my basement in a 2016 house. So I, I have no problem with what Katie's doing, but I am here to tell you that my dream home went to a nightmare. And that's what you folks are here for, is to listen to the neighbors. I think we all have to consider, Peoria Heights is, is a booming town, and there's going to be development, and I am all for it. I think it's great. I love living here. I used to love living here. And I'm living in a nightmare. So that is up to you guys to figure out how this isn't going to happen to somebody again. Because this is unacceptable. And you have to listen to the neighbors. It's imperative. Because I am stuck in a situation now that I don't know any way out of. So I just urge you to please listen to the neighbors. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience? So Kathy has a letter from, oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Scott Lewis. I'm the builder of the dream home. And I hear the neighbors speaking about water issues. And as a builder in lots of different areas, it is a huge concern of ours to do things right, and to catch water and deposit it where it needs to go. So in these narrow lot subdivisions like, like Katie's doing, it's imperative that we put tiles between the houses, and we catch the downspout water, and we catch as much water coming off the yards as possible, and take them to the storm drains to alleviate water going into basements and solve those problems. So we take that very seriously. We don't want to, we want to be a good neighbor in the community. We don't want our water running onto others' property. And, you know, if someone hasn't, if there's an existing house there, we can take their water into our tile as well to help prevent their water coming into, into our basement areas. So just to help give you some reassurance that we, we will address those concerns on every unit that we would build, so.
So can you explain, because I was going to ask Katie then?
Yeah.
So I don't, are the, are there gutters planned then for this, for the roof, for the pitch roof?
Sure, yeah. So we'll bring the downspouts down, tile them to collection tiles, and run them out to storm sewers.
Okay. And then, so do you have another, another way to catch the, just the water between the houses, other than, I mean, you talked about tiles, I know, I know how that system works, but is there a, a, some sort of a force field that could carry it out, or?
We will grade the, the properties correctly. And if need be, we can put a surface drain in that also drains into that storm tile. It, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis.
Sure.
You know, until we get there, we, I can't tell you exactly, but we're aware of it, and we will address each unit that we would do, yeah.
Okay. Any questions of Scott? Mr. Lewis, so I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. So there's a neighbor in this community who's maybe not part of this site plan, but existing homeowner, and they want to ensure that they don't have runoff in their basements, and you're willing to allow them to tap into your, what you're building to redirect some of their water through the spouts?
Yeah, I mean, the tile will be there, and we will make provisions for them to hook into it. It's up to them to do it, but yeah.
Sure, sure, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Scott, I know you had a similar situation with this, with the zero-lot line homes that are off Knoxville, kind of, it was Marion Nell's development back there?
Yeah.
And you had put in the large developments, it funneled down, but you still had people that had basements that were flooding. What, what did you do to rectify that? Because that, in this situation, I mean, that was a new development where you had the infrastructure in before you started. In this development, I think you've got neighbors that are, you know, they're there right now, they're concerned before the infrastructure starts because they know it's a problem. So in that situation, what did you do to rectify it then? And was it a homeowner situation that had to take care of that?
It was a grading issue. And you guys keep talking about the, you know, the flat plain that Katie's got on the drawing. There's no street that's a flat plain. The only time you're going to see it look like that is on that piece of paper. You know, as the street rises, the house will hazard rises as well, you know, they'll have to go with the street. So it's just imperative that we get the grading correctly and working with the neighbors. And it might mean tearing up their yard a little bit to, to regrade their yard to get it to, to flow. As long as they're open to that, then that's what we need to do.
And then in the, in the interim, so that they can feel comfortable before the infrastructure is put in, what, what do you do to alleviate it at that, during that time?
We collect the water on surface tiles. We'll lay, lay tiles to run them out to the street, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
I do have one other question. Where will the air conditioner and kind of, that kind of stuff, is that on top of it, under that, is it hidden by the carpet or roof, is that?
We were going to kind of, in that particular plan you're looking at, we're going to kind of put it back in that, that patio area.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's on the inset between the garage and?
Correct.
Good, thanks. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, so we have one letter that was given to us by Janie, who's on the board, but she's also a neighbor. So we can read that letter.
And it was distributed, so all the board members should have read it, but just so that the general public hears it. So it's site plan response, variance request for 1322 East Samuel, St. Jude's Dream Home. Overall, I am very appreciative of the idea of an in-build on Samuel. I think the idea of a St. Jude Dream Home is wonderful. I do not, however, agree with all the variance that's needed to build this particular building. This is the first building built, in my opinion, it will set the precedent for other in-builds to come. I love the potential that these plans have. I personally feel that we are in a critical time in the development process, and want to make sure it's done with the community and its ecosystem in mind. My responses to the variance requests will be short and sweet to save time, but are not meant to sound as brash as they may read. I'm opposed to the height variance because the building would be too much taller than the houses around it, especially because the topography is not flat on the street. I'm concerned about the proposed lot size because of the precedent it could set for in-builds to come. There are too many buildings, in my opinion, they won't look like they belong in the neighborhood at all. Three, I have a major concern about the front yard depth setback, which I think that's a non-issue.
That's a non-issue.
And the variance request for lot coverage. My concern is with vegetation around the house. There are very large, beautiful trees surrounding this home. If the trees are torn down, the lack of shade vegetation would markedly raise the temperature of the ground, as well as no longer provide needed shade for that house and the neighborhood. Without the trees and the other vegetation, the residents will need to use more energy and therefore money to compensate for the rise in temperature. The root system, other trees have also play a key role in filtering the groundwater in the heights without these major root systems. Trees have, and potentially more to come down with further development of the street, have the community, excuse me, the trees have the community, trees have, anyway, and the community will have to pay and use more resources to clean the water. Simply planting trees to replace the ones being taken down is not a valid equivalent for many reasons. I also think it's important to keep in mind that part of the pull to come to Peoria Heights is of vegetation in the green space that the village has to offer, and it's imperative to be mindful of what we do change and be sure to take care of what we have. I'm opposed to the fence variance because the original pictures of project development defenses appear very flush and in line to other buildings, but with the topography not being flush, I don't believe it would end up looking as nice as presented. I'm also unaware of how a fence would be needed for the building or its residents at all.
Okay. Public comments will be closed at this point. And so do we have any other questions of Katie? Does she need to come back up, or are we ready to just discuss this?
She can respond to anything that was said, if she likes.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the, to kind of address the water runoff, I mean, that was one of the things, the reason why we put the infrastructure in to the whole entire program that we're doing within the development. We live at 1430 Samuel, so we live at the bottom of Samuel. So when it rains, we flood our basement, our finished basement. So we've come home, since we have recently moved, to about a foot and a half or two feet of water in our basement. Especially when we have the torrential downpour that basically gave us two feet within, you know, less than 30 minutes. What we had done to rectify the problem is, we made, we had a gutter specialist come out. We sized the gutters according to the roof, which they currently were not done. At that point in time, we added new gutters to the house, as well as to a couple other rental houses that we were found got water in the basement, and we've upgraded those gutter sizes. We've also kicked the gutters out from the house a little bit more, which has helped that as well. And at this point, we're not really ready to go into the expense of the drain tile, but that would have been a third option if it would have chosen to done it, to have gone that way. It has now stopped the flooding in the basement, those two fixes, just for information for you guys. But when it rains, everything comes down Samuel, and we get everything from the alley, and we get everything from the street. So I am living and breathing the water situation daily. So I understand your guys' pain, and that was the whole reason why, again, this is something that we found to put in the infrastructure from the very beginning on that side. And I appreciate the comments, again, that the neighbors had shared with, you know, if this is a one-off development, this is not. This is a development where we came in and are purchasing multiple lots to, to reset. And a lot of you have met with and talked about the economics behind it, and how that will help the heights, and about how it enables existing homeowners to be able to financially afford to do an addition under their house because of the comps. And I've sat, I know at length with a couple of you, and, and discussed that side of the project. The alley parking, just to clarify that, we didn't say we'd park in the alley, but we are looking to widen it. To what degree, like Rick said, we don't know yet. But it would be where we would access the house, as Kathy mentioned. And again, almost, and the energy efficiency with the, the trees and that, the energy efficiencies of these houses coming in, I can tell you, because we're, we own and are maintaining a lot of these houses, there'll be more energy-efficient units, which will have less drain on the energy that's needed, and have better insulation in the houses. So it actually costs the residents less, and it'll be a less of a tax on our energy system. In terms of the trees, I had asked an arborist about the energy and the trees and requirement, and they didn't say that they had any documented proof of that, so I don't know where that came from. I can't validate that. I tried to reach out to get something, but the arborist said that either way, they didn't really know and had not heard of that. And in regards to the, the green space and the village, we're not messing with the front yard setback. So what the, the public experiences in that front yard and the green will still be able to be experienced in that same way, because we're not, again, encroaching on that front, front yard setback as well. And as we've mentioned previously, and I don't want to beat a, beat a dead horse, we, we are looking to plant the trees and plant the trees where they won't be invasive to the houses. Because some of them, right now, are up against root systems and are caving in basement walls. So while we love them, they also are causing some massive structural problems, as well as infrastructure problems with having to drain out the root system, which we've talked about before. But again, that's another reason why we want to do the infrastructure, to solve a lot But again, that's another reason why we want to do the infrastructure, to solve a lot of these problems on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? I think what we're going to do is go through each variance.
Yeah, you got four, you might as well take them one at a time.
And talk about the standards for the variation individually. So with that, we have the first variance, I believe, is the 6.25 feet in height above the 12-foot limit allowed. So, everybody has your variance sheet. Bear with me, I forgot my glasses tonight.
Can I just say one thing, Rick? Just regarding the height, because I guess that's, as far as to Katie, I mean, I'm very excited about the St. Jude's House coming to the heights, and I think, you know, most of what you've got designed here is fine. I think the height is an issue that I had with the condo building, and it's the same issue that I have with these buildings, I think, going, we put that restriction in place because we felt that it was a way to kind of keep the newer buildings in at least an appropriate line with the housing that's there. Because I mean, I know that, I'm still considering this an infill project, because until the buildings are there, you never know what's going to happen in terms of what's going to get built. So I guess, in terms of, I'm listening to the neighbors, in terms of hearing what they're saying, and I agree too, that, you know, having buildings that, homes that are three stories in height, and not, you know, using, I guess, I was under the assumption too that you were going to have a basement. So that was how I read those requirements. So to me, that seems like a better use to put a basement in, to have the building shorter so it's more in line with the neighborhood. And it's the same way that I thought about the condo building, that I thought the four stories was too tall. So I just think that's really important. We all passed that ordinance, I don't know if it was unanimous, but there was good support for it. So I just would like the board to keep that in mind as they're voting.
Okay, so the 6.25-foot height variance, well, strict application of the terms of zoning code relating to the use, construction, or alternation of the building or structures, or the use of the land impose practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner. So you have yes or no. So yes, it will provide a strict hardship or difficulty, a particular hardship or difficulty, or no, it does not, so.
Can you repeat that again?
Yeah, so the, what we're saying here is the strict application of the zoning ordinance for the 6.25 variance, so strict application that the house next to the house can only be 12 feet high or taller poses a particular difficulty or hardship upon this petitioner in terms of the buildings or structure to the land's use.
Say yes.
Yeah, if you think the variance is appropriate, you would vote yes, and if you think it's not, you would vote no.
Say yes.
So one yes.
No.
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 Yes.
No.
No.
Five, three. Yep. Okay, so, three yes, five no. So that's all I have to do on that one. So then, variance number two is the requested variance for lot size. So the lot size, a variance of 2,250 square feet. So, just a sec, I'm going to fill all this, might as well do it now. So, question one, will the strict application of the terms of zoning code related to the use, construction, or alternation of buildings or structures, or the use of land impose practical difficulties or a particular hardship upon the petitioner? Again, if you think the variance is appropriate, it's yes. If you think the variance is not appropriate, then no, so.
Yes.
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 Okay. Eight, zero. The variation is, if the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Okay. The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner, but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship to the petitioner?
Yes.
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 Okay. Can the variation requested by petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 And can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 And then, if the proposed variance involves a fence, will the fence, oh, this does not... Okay, so then a motion to approve the variance with any conditions? Anybody want to make that? For the lot size variance, the 2,250 square foot size variance.
Can I just ask a question, Mark? If you make it, just with Scott being up here and said he would take care of everything, do you, do you have something in there that if there becomes, because of lot coverage issues, that there's, I'm just trying to figure out to make sure that there's some assurances with?
It wouldn't be inappropriate to make a condition that the owner make adequate provision for, you know, the handling of stormwater runoff, yeah.
I'm sorry, you're saying that?
That would be an appropriate condition.
Okay, just given the level of concern.
The village is going to require that anyway, with or without the variance having imposed that condition.
Right.
But if, you know, if it makes you more comfortable, that would be an appropriate condition.
I just feel like there could be a time lapse, but, so, I don't know whether, I mean, that's just, I would just ask a question.
So does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
With that condition or without?
Without.
I second that. Nicholas T., I can't, I can't ever spell his last name. Okay, any other discussion? Can you call the roll, Matt?
Sure.
Nico?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Tessie?
Aye.
How about I? Steve?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, eight, zero, zero. On to variance number three, which is the lot coverage. So the variance request for 173 square feet of additional coverage. Okay, the strict application of the terms of zoning code relating to the use, construction, or alternation of the buildings or structures, or use of land impose practical difficulties or a particular hardship upon the petitioner?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, no.
Uh, yes.
Uh, yes.
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 Seven more. If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as convenience to the petitioner, but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship to the petitioner?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation be approved without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
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 Okay, does not include a fence. So, so then a motion to approve the request for a variance for 173 square foot additional coverage of the lot, 4%, 4.7% above the 40% by code. Anybody want to make that motion?
Yeah.
Mike Wu, seconded by?
I'll second.
Nicholas. Matt, call the roll. Any other discussion? Okay, call the roll. Okay, Nico?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Tessie?
Aye.
How about I? Steve?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Eight, zero, zero. And then, the variance number four is for the fence, front yard fence code. So requesting for a front yard fence. Brick pillars at the entrance to the sidewalk and on the edge of the building, the brick pillars may or may not have lights on them. Total height of the fence would be 36 inches. And it, and it is 40% open. At the property line. Okay. Well, the strict application of the terms of zoning code relating to the use, construction, or alternation of the building or structures, or the use of land impose practical difficulties or a particular hardship upon the petitioner?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
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 Sixty. If the variation is granted, the property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
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 The approval of the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the petitioner, but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship on the petitioner?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
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 Can the variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes.
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 Can the proposed variation prove without impairing the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan as implemented by the zoning code?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 And then, if proposed variance involves a fence, will the fence conform to the standards set forth in subsections 10, 4, to, I just hit that up if we want to, just a second. Make sure everybody hears them. So it's basically, no fence shall be erected if front yarders first obtaining a variance, should not exceed four feet in height, and a fence constructed in yards should not have less than 40% open design, and no variance is required to repair unauthorized existing front yard fence, and when placing a front yard fence, no fence shall be situated between the front lot line and the rear slot line of this said location without first obtaining a variance. And it's not a corner lot, so we do not have to go into the corner lot, and it's not a rear fence. Okay? So, Nico?
Yes.
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 Okay. Eight, zero. So then, a motion to approve the request for variance made by, anybody want to make that, front yard fence, 36 inches, 40% open at the property line?
I'll make that motion.
And seconded by? Okay, Matt, call the roll. Unless there's any discussion over that. Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you. Nico?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Tessie?
Aye.
How about I?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
So passes six to two. No stains.
Okay, so, we may have lost this for all the variances, but we do also have to go through that drill on the site plan.
Oh, yes. You're right.
The focus was on variances, but the site plan is up for improvement.
You are correct, and I had one already.
I have a question about that. If, one of the things that wasn't approved was the height, that could substantially impact the site plan. Are we just talking about the building footprint?
My interpretation of the site plan review process is really, you know, the building footprint.
Just the footprint?
Everything else has to be in compliance with zoning.
Okay.
And so, this site plan determined, you know, what was based upon variances being granted. So the site plan is necessarily changed based upon the variances that are or are not granted. So in other words, if you submit a site plan that shows you need a 10-foot setback variance and you don't get it, you're moving it back 10 feet. So, the building height, we, if we approve the site plan as presented, and the village board affirms the denial of the variance for building height, she can't exceed the building height. So the site plan doesn't trump the variance approval. Did that answer?
Well, it just, if it substantially, at some point, if that would not get approved, it would... it would change the site plans, then that would have to come before...
Well, then, then she would have to come back.
That's my question, okay.
But I think I heard that, uh, Kathy, I talked about something else, but, so, say again, so, if we approve the site plan as is, it's site plan as is with the variances that did get approved.
Correct. Correct.
The establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use site plan will not detriment or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comforts, or general welfare.
Yes.
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 The special use or site plan will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted or substantially diminishing a pair of property tax values within the neighborhood which is de-located.
Yes.
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 So I have a question, this is, this would be based on the variances that we have approved. Okay, yes.
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 The establishment of the special use or site plan will not impede the normal orderly development improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district.
Yes.
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 Adequate facilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities have been or will be provided.
Yes.
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 Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress to design as minimize traffic congestion in the public streets.
Yes.
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 Public use or providing utility is an N.A., and special use site plan in all other respects will conform to the applicable regulations of the district which is located, except as regulations may be in each instance modified pursuant to the recommendation of the zoning Board of Appeals.
Yes.
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 Okay, so then, uh, need a motion to approve the special use site plan with any conditions, if there are any, but not if there are.
Uh, motion to approve this, uh, site plan with the variances approved or denied?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Matt, call the roll.
Okay.
Nico?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Tessie?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, other business. So I think we have Larry in the au, in the audience, if you want to step up and give us a review of what you're thinking on Durier.
Sorry, I think Samuel, maybe we should...
Pardon?
Is Samuel a lot?
I don't, is he ready for that?
I didn't talk copies here. Take a few of those.
Good evening, try to keep this short tonight, it's getting late. I'm Larry Herman, I live at 5513 North Montclair in Peoria, uh, 61614. Um, I'm the past developer of the 1221 Durier complex, which I'm sure some of you have seen, have been in, and, um, since we started that complex, um, I would just say it's been a tremendous success. It's fully leased, um, the traffic has been very calm, um, the underground parking is working wonderfully, and the very minimal parking on the outside, the alley, the alley use has been very minimal. So after we completed the project, the neighbor, the two neighboring properties going to Atlantic approached us and said, "We'd like to see you continue your development." And so, we went into appraisals and we purchased the property appropriately, so we do have those two properties in hand. They are zoned B1. The, um, the, the, we did not go to the expense of giving you full rendering drawings of the full thing. At this point, we're coming to the board to see, is this the kind of a footprint that will work in this locality if we were to repeat what we did at 1221? The only differences between 1221, I think it's 1201, would be, it, the building would be two-thirds smaller, the look would be the same, other than it would be an all wood frame building where the parking garage would be in a wood frame structure, where we would then have windows into the garage on the front facade. Because, uh, we did receive some complaints about all of the masonry structure that is holding up floors two, three, and four. So the first floor would still be a garage, but it would have a more residential look with the siding that would come down without all of the, uh, masonry block that is there currently. So the elevation, as you would drive by, would be all repeated, the roof lines would be repeated, the window scaping would be repeated, the balconies would be repeated. So it would be just a brother or sister to the building that we have now. The only difference is there are more two-bedroom units, and on the fourth floor, we would current, we would probably put in, um, some three-bedroom units or some larger suites because we've had a lot of recommendation, uh, and a lot of direction of people that would desire a larger unit. Um, I don't want to call it a penthouse unit, I do say it, which is a three-bedroom unit that's larger, um, for whatever uses that they want. So that's in consideration. So the building would still have an elevator, it would still have all of the appearance, it would still have the parking off to the back in the alley, and the parking all underneath the, um, the building. So we would have 42 parking spaces, and we would have 1.75 parking spaces per unit, which is more than adequate. And under the current zoning, as I read the zoning and as our architects and designers read the zoning, that I guess we do fall within the overlay district. So the only thing that I have been able to find in the zoning, um, the detailed zoning that's in the Peoria Heights website, would be the 75 percent glass, but we don't have a retail usage on the first floor. So, under this proposal, um, it would meet all of the guidelines as far as front setback, side yards, rear parking, and the only thing that would be minus would be the glass. So we would have a variance on the glass, because I don't think we could get the 75 percent of people that want to look into a parking garage. So, but there would be glass there. The, there is 50 feet between the building, and we're proposing a park that's going to be between the buildings, and that would be a park that would be, if the surrounding neighbors wanted to use it, they could, but it would be an outdoor entertainment area as far as a grill, uh, a, um, a gas fire pit, a, um, an outdoor kitchen type of a thing, that's seasonal that would be used, and then a lot of trees and landscaping between the units, because it's much more conducive to put trees and landscaping there, um, rather than when you go into the overlay district, if we were to put trees all the way down the front of the building, it would be in everybody's windows, which would not be a plus for a tenant. So we would like to overlandscape to begin the middles and maybe the corners of the units, the building, um, where we can. Other than that, if we fall within that zoning structure, if we don't fall within the structure of the overlay district, which I can't see how we don't, because we're one block off, so it's like, this is what we are, and so this is what we're dealing with, it would go into an R, R2 district, I believe.
I think the, the ten of the overlay district was a capture of the properties. Even though it's B1, you can, you're multi-family, obviously, and...
Right. So if it was B1, it would auto, the way I read it, it would automatically go to R2 for, uh, multi-family type situation, but I don't think that's in consideration here because we're within the, um, overlay district.
So we were talking about this earlier, so, all the properties from, uh, going west to Atlantic?
To Atlantic.
Are B1 now?
I think the house may have the residential zoning, but the majority of the lots where the insurance office is right now is all, is all B1.
And, and this park area you're talking about is?
Yeah, there's, that would be 50 feet between the buildings there, and actually, underneath of that would be our underground water storage system, so we would put hardscape, um, picnic area there, and then everything behind that would be grass, trees, and, and that type of, since I'm going to live there, my wife's going to want a garden, so that's going to be there as well. So, one of the conditions.
Larry, so it's, it's only 24 units versus?
It's 24 units because there's a lot less land. So the parcel, the whole parcel of the footprint is, um, 125 by 83, so there's...
Okay, so currently you have 12 on a floor, so...
Pardon?
Currently, isn't there 12 units on a, well, I guess, does it depend?
Well, this would be eight units per floor.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's still the three stories?
Right.
And then what were you describing with the, so we have the floor plan for one and two, but the top floor was going to be?
The top floor may have some three-bedroom units or larger two-bedroom units.
Okay.
That was just the number one request that had come.
From your wife?
No. She doesn't know about that yet. So, um, no, there's just, there is, there's just, um, we've seen a lot of demand where people are coming out of homes, they don't want to live in a home anymore, but they want the most residential feeling apartment complex that they can live in and still be turnkey and travel and do, do the same lifestyle that they want. So, so the amenity spaces would be there, it's just, it's a, it's a repeat of what we've done, which has been a great success, and, um, other than a few modifications on the, the windows on the lower level into the garage.
In, on your current one, I know with the parking, you've, I mean, whenever I've driven by, there's, there's ample parking, I mean...
There's, it's, the parking lot is 60 to 70 percent unused.
Say the outside parking looks like you don't...
Right.
Really have people using it that much, so...
Well, a lot of people that have, um, a lot of the couples and so forth that have moved there have went to one car.
Okay.
Um, as a savings, and they either walk, they bike, or they take Uber, or, or what have you, and they go to, go down to us to one car family, which obvious is, would be pretty nice.
So what is the purpose then of the indentation of parking on the, as opposed to just doing, um, a green space there where there could be trees? I guess I feel differently about the trees, I think it looks more attractive to be looking out at a tree.
Right.
So if, is there a reason for the indentation of that parking there if there's, I mean, there's, there's ample parking, like you just said? So, um, in terms of just on this side, not, not having that indentation there, because again, you have a loading area there, but obviously you can have a loading area anywhere in the back or in, you know?
Well, the front loading area is strictly for moving trucks to come in and out, it's for Uber pickup, it's for UPS, FedEx, the mail, and anybody that's handicapped that has to come up to the front of the building.
But that could still be on the street as well? I mean, that's how a lot of...
On the street, it is on, isn't it?
Well, that's, who, so who determines that inset for the, the roadway there? Is that, I mean, that's public property, so when it was, when it was done before, was that something that the village determined?
Well, yeah, I mean, the loading zone would be by the front door of the building, so...
Right, I'm just saying, as far as, is that something that the, like, the village board approved having that there, or is that?
Well, if I remember right, in the original site plan, we were, one, worried about street parking and having enough parking spot.
Right.
People that would just come up and park for half hour, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
The trucks, loading trucks, delivery trucks, that kind of thing, to have a place to pull over instead of being in the street. So I think it was really, we talked about that.
Right.
At this level.
It's a safety issue.
Yeah, it's just not...
It was the first, I believe this was the first site plan as a board.
Yeah.
As a combined board we ever looked at, so...
Right.
Yeah.
And so there is public parking in the front, just like there is at Durier now, and I don't know who parks there, there's a lot of people that park there and walk down into the heights and so forth as well. So was your question on the back parking or the front parking?
No, I just don't see the need for that in the front, and I would, I would prefer not to have the inset like that, that just, that's my, my opinion, I, I prefer to keep the streetscape, um, continuous with the continuous, um, sidewalk, um, I would prefer to see that actually as green space there that we could have some trees, um, I mean, I was just looking at today, one of the plans that we had done with some, and they had some plans drawn for like Durier and stuff that would be tree, streetscape with trees, I mean, sorry, streetscape with trees, um, so anyways, I'm just, that's the issue that I'm going to have.
The front hatch mark that are by the front door, as I, as you're seeing there, it, it doesn't need to be quite that big, it, it could be one parking spot less. But I have found, because I'm at that building every day and, um, helping maintain it, and, um, obviously, when there's a new building, there's warranty issues and things that come up, so I'm there every day, but I have really noticed that it creates a super safe place for somebody to get picked up, so they don't have to walk out into the street, and it creates a great place when people move, and also for all of the parcel deliveries, I mean, the parcel deliveries are immense.
I mean, I, the street is not heavy traffic street.
Right.
Larry, is, what's the grade there?
The grade?
Yeah. Um, there's a... As far as, like, is it flush with the, I mean, for like a handicapped person coming in and out, is it flush, or is there a little bit of a lip there on the?
In that particular, the, um... That's going to have to, on that particular building, on the building that we have now at 1221, there's a curb, there is, because the handicap access is on the side and the rear.
Okay.
But on this particular building, the handicap access, based upon what the engineers lay out, may have to be on the front of the building.
Sure.
So if it's, uh, if it's on the front of the building, then that creates a hole, we're just not that far yet.
Gotcha. Okay. And there's a demand, obviously, for, for this?
Uh, I get calls every day.
Really?
The website is getting lots of traffic, Facebook's getting a lot of traffic, the, we're turning people away as we speak, so, the demands there easily, because it's, it's just been a great project.
Mark, where can I just have a question? So last month, we were talking about the overlay, we were talking about the overlay district.
Right.
And because it, it, it's not specific to all items, and particularly, we, we have only addressed, um, mixed use, and I thought you said that if it's, if it's in the overlay district, but it doesn't specifically address a multi-family...
Right.
It falls back to R3?
It does.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
This would be under R3.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to...
Did you say this would be under R3?
Yes.
Yes. Even though you're, you're, you're in B1, but because it's a residential use, uh, the B1 zoning ordinance says, you know, these are the permitted uses, and residential's permitted, but the, the rules are under R3.
If the overlay district isn't there?
Correct, and since the overlay district says only the things that are specifically addressed in the overlay ordinance, um, are, are changes to zoning, otherwise, all the original zoning would apply.
Right.
So in your case, it's, the overlay district is irrelevant, it's, it's completely covered by R3.
So...
You're not planning on putting any, like, commercial on the first floor?
Well, the way I read, the way I read the overlay district, it does specify that you can have multi-family units on multiple floors, as long as there's all retail on one floor or business on one floor.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a different use.
So that's what we were using as our guideline.
You don't have the retail on the main floor.
Right.
On the floor, so...
In other words, the zoning's going to be the same as it was for 1221, is it 1221? What's your current?
Well, it won't, because then I'll have to get variances if I go to the, if I go to R3. If I stay in with the overlay district, then there are no variances. to R3. If I stay in with the overlay district, then there are no variances. As far as front yards setback percentages of lot that's being used by the- covered by the building and-
What variances did you apply for with the first project?
Rick, you need to-
I can't answer that question, but I know that if we're under R2 now, if we would go to R2 or R3, we would have to have a variance for the front, because there's a 25-foot setback.
So if he had, like, you know, a garden shop for the park in there that sold a shovel, that would-
Yeah, honestly, this is not what we contemplated with the overlay. I'm a little caught without the ordinance in front of me, so I would have to look at that, and I can look at it and get back to you.
I think I've read it every day for a week, and I don't see how I don't comply.
It's not clear. The reason I realized it was when last month it came up for something else. I don't know what it was, but I remember you said, "Well, if it doesn't specifically address that item, then it falls back."
Right.
And so, because I was doing the same thing. I kept reading and reading and reading, but had you not said that, so it probably needs to be clarified better.
I will do that.
Yeah.
Well, I was reading from the residential portion. It sounds like that it falls under the overlay district with one block off.
So just to be clear, you will or will not have any commercial use in there?
I will not have any commercial use.
No retail, no nothing other than, okay.
No.
I'll get you an answer.
And if that's the case, that's fine, but then I would have to reply for a variance for the front and a variance for the lot coverage.
I think there- if I remember back, it was the- well, and this is a little bit different, I don't know, but anyways, there was a Florida-area ratio that would've been into play. I think there would've been-
Yeah, I'm 2,000 feet over. I got a- I have 11,000 square-foot building.
And maybe a front setback. I can't remember. Those are the ones I'm thinking it was, but...
Yeah. The land now at 40 percent would have- I could put a 9,164 square-foot building on that property. What we're proposing is 11,544.
Okay.
So it's a little over $2,000, $2,000 square feet difference.
I will look at that, verify one way or another, so you know.
Mm-hmm. But I guess what I'm looking for, and I know this is a non-voting board, but how do you let a developer know that, yes, you can go forward with those plans, or do we go and apply for variances now?
Yeah, I mean, as soon as Mark finds out whether you need to apply for variances, we'll let you know the variance piece. But I mean, just as far as, does the board have any reservations or questions about the development itself, or the?
I mean, I already told you my reservations. I prefer not to have ample parking way of it, so I prefer not to have the streetscape like that, but what did you say the materials were on the first story?
The materials on the existing building are split-faced concrete masonry.
Yeah, I know.
Right. And the materials on the second building that we would build have not been determined, but there will be windows on that scape.
Some windows looking into that.
Right. And just based upon the feedback that we got from some of you board members and some people in the community, that they had wished they had seen maybe a few more windows.
In that garage area, too?
Yeah, I mean, it's a safety concern. Somebody could break in there, but we may have to- we may have to put some restrictions or barriers on the inside, because it would just be an easy way for somebody to access. But for the sake of architectural design and speaking, but we haven't got that far yet.
Have you considered landscaping? I mean, some landscaping that's maybe even more appropriate to the size of the-
Instead of windows?
Well, yeah, I mean, in terms of, I understand what people are saying in terms of, there's, I guess, more concrete than I was expecting, I guess. And I didn't have the original plans that you had shown. I think that, like I said, that was the first meeting, I think, that I was on the board. So that was surprising to me, but then also the scale of some of the landscaping, and I know some of it is very small.
There's a lot of grasses and lower shrubs, because we just didn't really wanna impede the view.
I figured that might be, but I mean, even just larger bushes that would screen that concrete block portion out.
That's just a matter of a contractor buying bigger ones or smaller ones. We'll buy bigger ones, Tessie.
Well, I mean, there's things that are never gonna get that big.
Yeah.
You've got foxwoods there that are never gonna-
Yeah.
So it depends.
No, there's service berries, Japanese maples and so forth that are- they will-
I just don't know if that might be a point, too, believing-
Right. We're very open to that. Those are not-
Is there a rental office or anything? Is there- I see there's a lobby, but is there- there's absolutely no commercial activity going?
I could- there probably will be a rental office in there, yes. I would think so.
And would that office be conducting any commercial activity?
It could. I could rent that out to a-
Or-
-multiple shared office space.
Or would that be doing some office for the actual residential apartment complex?
It's gotta be.
So it would be doing some sort of commercial activity by renting out these buildings?
That might-
Yeah, if I-
It's a question on the overlay district, so.
Well, if I were to put in a rental office there, for the sake of finances, I would probably- I would want more use of that, so I may have two temporary uses that would come in and out of there. But that would also cancel out the overlay district, because it's gotta be all on one floor, one or nothing.
I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. I mean, I think we need to understand what it is, and then-
Sure.
So I appreciate where you're going, but it says very clearly that it's either all residential or all commercial within the code, so.
No, I think it looks-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns, or, I mean?
Do you want these?
Do you want to leave that?
Sure.
We got a question.
Yeah.
Yes?
Is there opportunity for public input, or not?
Sure.
Sure.
Let's see. My name is Jay Gruber. I live at 3814 North Monroe. As a financial planner who helps folks who can afford to retire to find condos like this, I would like to support the concept of the three-bedroom units. You can have your whole family home for the holiday if you've got three bedrooms. If you have two, maybe. So I would just share with you, I would support that manifestation of accommodation of the requests that he may have received. So I wanted to say that. I also would share with you that I feel that the look of the split concrete is too much concrete, and that the bushes and the trees do need to be bigger. And I love the units on the inside. I really feel like we should have a more inviting ground floor. I actually brought some food to a family that was there, but I didn't know which unit it was, and I ended up leaving it on the chair, because I couldn't figure out how to even, like, say hello or ring the doorbell. I mean, it was a new family, so I would just share with you that I would like to see a little more, I think, gentleness on that ground floor, on the exterior. And so I would support your wife's idea of having some garden plots. I would support the concept that Tessie's bringing up with the bigger bushes or trees, or not having the inset on the drive-through there. I do understand it's useful, but I would share with you that maybe you can do that in the back or something, but that more trees and greenery there would be a big improvement to that space. So I just, I do support the inside version of what's going on is wonderful. Any questions?
Is it in the- Oh, okay. And so we also had discussion review of potential office space for 1315 and 1331 Samuel?
Yes.
That discussion came up as to the builder that bought, I think, here, that bought the lots across the street, approached me to purchase them, and I had said I really wasn't interested in doing the housing-type thing, but I've had a very strong interest of some people that wanna put in some office space. But then, once I found out that it was, I didn't wanna- I'm gonna resum that, because I don't wanna add more complications to the Samuel Street District there, so, thank you.
Bye. And then, under miscellaneous, Dustin isn't here to give us an update.
Yeah.
But you don't know anything? So we had a discussion about the follow-up update on the residential overlay?
That's just something that we had as a goal to-
So we met with Tri-County, so you don't know anything that they're working on?
I don't know anything about that.
Okay. So we met with Tri-County Planning and-
Early June.
Pardon?
Early June?
Early June, yeah. And talked to them about putting together a proposal for the village, for either them or somebody else to help us develop that residential overlay. And so we had it on the agenda tonight to get an update, but I'm not sure Dustin was- I forgot to remind him to stay and give us that update, so.
Yeah, I know he's working with Tri-County on an overhaul of the comprehensive plan, and specifically zoning from A to Z, you know, not being cute, the whole thing, and that would absolutely fall under that. So we've- we have put that out for bids. I think that ad might be in the paper today.
It actually, it was on the website. I noticed it today, that it was on the website.
Yeah, we're looking for proposals for that.
But it doesn't really address, I think, what we were thinking, but.
It goes way beyond zoning. It's the comprehensive plan, so.
Yep.
So when they put that, do they send it specifically to people that would be qualified to do?
The guy at Tri-County is gonna send it to all the companies he knows would likely bid on it, but you have to advertise as part of the process. So the ad is a, you know, requirement, but he'll get it into the hands of the right people that would typically respond.
And are we- are we technically considered for up the planning commission? Are we just tripling zoning?
No, there is no planning commission anymore.
Okay, so we're just zoning. So we wouldn't be involved in any of that?
So we were, it was combined to be zoning, but it's-
Well, I guess, I shouldn't say there is no plan. It is a combined board, but I'm not aware of any planning responsibilities that you have. Now, having said that, whatever kind of comprehensive plan that we come up with is gonna be in this arena before it goes to the village board.
But I mean, is there, if that gets, that was my question, do we have any opportunity to have any sort of input on that prior to it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Coming to us as a board, like, are there, will there be even, even just the public, you know?
Oh, absolutely. That's, it's not something that's just gonna get passed. And it will address landscaping, and all of these things that we've been talking about will be addressed in it.
If you go to the village website, it says, like, RFP. I can, I'll send Sarah the link and have her send it to everybody. I sent it, yeah, I mean, but it's on the website, and so it goes through in detail. But when we met with them, the, we were asking after, you know, the Chick-Morrowan coming to town, are we gonna do something more? And we've been asking for some help with the residential. And so the idea was, they felt like they needed to go further on the comprehensive plan, and so they asked Tri-County to kind of put together a proposal. So this is, this is the first feedback we've seen, is the website information, I guess. But I agree, I think we need some input as it goes forward. But it sounds like they're gonna do focus groups, and Tess, you were involved in that once before. Hopefully, they'll get more notice.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, the mayor talked about focus groups.
The last one was very short notice that they-
Yeah, we'll make sure that everybody has plenty of opportunity for input. And my guess would be whoever winds up getting the contract is gonna probably be here to talk with us before they develop anything. So it's not like they're gonna put a document in front of you and say, "Here's the comprehensive plan. What do you think?" And I would expect they would interview everybody here, probably individually.
They, the deadline for the responses is, I think, September 30th, and when we met with them early June, which was the only time that we've met, I believe, I thought the mayor wanted something wrapped up by the end of-
That was me. That's all on me.
Oh, okay.
I thought that if you really want to reach out and-
To make a difference on what's happening, yeah.
Have people, we couldn't get the ad in the paper until this week, and I said, "August 30, that's ridiculous. You're not gonna get anybody to respond." Just putting together the response is gonna take two weeks. It's very detailed.
I would rather see us delay it and get more people involved, because the last time they did it, there was, I mean, most of the audience were employees of the village.
Right.
And so, I mean, it would be better to extend it out, not necessarily the response. I think your response on having them come back-
That was my sentiment.
Is September 30th, but even in terms of the next response, let's not try to cram it in-
Right, right.
-with Thanksgiving and Christmas, when, you know, you get out what you put into it.
The word comprehensive implies that it's gotta be-
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make sense, so.
Right. No, I totally agree with you.
Because it took Tri-County, June, July, I mean, it took them a while just to get it together, so we need more time, I think, in terms of the input that comes into it.
So then the other item related to that is the map. So I know we talked about how do we get an updated map?
Yeah.
But I don't know that we can wait that long for an updated map.
I think that's an independent project. I need to check on the status of where we're at with that.
Okay. And then, the last meeting, do we have the minutes? Is that in the minutes?
I don't-
We-
Change this to the landscape? Well, the landscape is one, and I'd have-
Well, the landscape thing, but then, there was something that we talked about that you were gonna actually-
Write an ordinance on it. You were gonna draft an ordinance on something.
You were gonna draft an ordinance on something for us.
Was it street seats? Was it? I can't remember.
I missed that, obviously.
You definitely were gonna draft something.
I remember saying I would get back to you on the overlay district, and, because we were thinking that-
It was actually drafting, it was drafting an ordinance, and I cannot-
Oh, I know what it is. It's for site plans for residential.
Right.
Right.
I, before I spend village dollars drafting things, I need, and I have not had a chance to talk to the administration about that. I've brought it up, we've had meetings, we've had to cancel them. That will happen.
Okay.
And that was actually driven by administration?
Yeah. So I've talked to Dustin again about it and said, because we had another instance that was very similar to what happened on Kingman over here.
We talked about it.
And I spent a lot of time on that in the last two weeks.
The one we talked about last Friday?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's all okay, but basically, I did a site plan review by myself.
Right.
And I think we, you know, that just kind of reinforced it for Dustin and I, that we probably need to have some-
I'll follow up with that.
We probably had to have some process. It's process, sorry. So anyhow, and maybe it's, maybe it's an abbreviated process for easy, you know, that's the thing. How do you tell when one's easy? But anyhow, that was the other thing. And then, so we did have the landscape plan, but do you think that that's gonna be covered with this comprehensive?
I certainly hope so, and if they don't initially, we need to make sure that they consider that as part of it. Most zoning ordinances have landscape requirements and-
Yeah, I looked at the Peoria County, I looked at the Peoria, I looked at Bloomington's. Sherry County and Peoria's are very similar.
Right.
Very straightforward. I mean, it almost seemed like we could adopt it without even doing anything. I mean, really, so it basically, if you take a look at a property, and Larry, you might even be familiar with this, maybe? In Peoria, they have a landscape requirement in Peoria County, and you get points based on, so if your property is, and I'm gonna make these numbers up, but let's say it's 100 feet wide in front, they think they divide it by two, and that you have to get 50 points of landscape value, and landscape value is based on, like, they count the trees that are there, so if you preserve the trees-
Dimension.
Yeah, they have, like, the caliper size of the tree at chest height or something, and it seemed, I mean, both of them mirrored each other. It seemed pretty, I mean, I read through, and I was trying to figure out, is there something that we couldn't just apply this? Because it seemed like you could.
I would like to wait until we have a consultant that looks at our ordinance and says, "Yeah, you know, Peoria has that, and that drives developers away," or, you know, I'm just, I don't know, but I would like them to weigh in on that.
Janey was gonna call, because we met on it, and she was gonna actually call, can't remember who it was, who's in Public Works in Peoria, but she was gonna ask him, you know, how has it worked?
Sure.
Is it going okay? That kind of thing, to see what would happen. But, you know, Dustin could also talk to, I can't remember his name, the guy in Peoria, the city administrator. I know his name, but I can't think of it right now.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, Patrick. So he could also talk to him, but she was just gonna reach out to Public Works, because she was assuming that- because she was assuming that they have to deal with it when there's issues or replacements.
I'll ask about that and get them rolling on that.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I don't know that we have any, I don't know that we have any business for September yet. I'm trying to remember, seems like there was one thing, maybe, that Sarah thought might be submitted for September, but I don't think we have anything formally submitted yet, and I think the deadline is coming up, like, next Wednesday, or next Wednesday or Thursday, I think would be the, so we'll find out, we'll know more next Wednesday or Thursday if we have one formally submitted. Other than that, yes?
I would just like to affirm the concept that Kathy brought up there, that there might be something we can do to not have more parking lots come in without streetscaping. I'm disturbed that, I love the idea of a comprehensive plan, we need one, absolutely, the full process should be done, but my opinion is that the streetscaping, we're losing things right now, and if we could, I don't know if there's a methodology for temporary ordinance